Regular session from Monday, October 16th at 7:00 PM. We'll call the meeting to order and at this time we will have the invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag, which you're cordially invited to join us if you so choose. At this time, we'll have the invocation, which will be the Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Now, we'll have the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a public for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes for the work session, which was held on September 18th. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes as written? Motion to accept?
I have some discussion.
Certainly.
I noticed that I was missing from the work session, but I was actually present, unless I'm missing it.
Okay. I think we need to correct that.
Oh, okay.
He said he was missing from the work session on the list of the present members. All right. So with that corrected, was there any other, anything else that anyone needs to correct before we take a, with that correction then Heather's made a motion with that correction? Is that okay Heather?
That is fine. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Have the vote.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Solak?
Aye.
Commissioner Schott?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
The minutes pass.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, included on top of your packet were three documents. One of them is corrected minutes for the regular session.
Okay.
It's one small change under the membership. We had to switch who was actually the acting chair for last meeting, but that's the only correction that was made, but you have those corrected minutes in front of you.
Okay. We have a correction in front of us for this, for the, all right, we're moving to the regular session now, which was also held on September 18th, 2023. With note of the correction by Thomas, do we have any other corrections necessary?
Yes, I'm not with you.
That's okay.
Pete, we had a-
There's an additional sheet that was put, that was printed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is for the regular session.
I have the regular session, yeah. What I don't have is the work session.
The only, the only change was in the original that we had Vice Chairwoman Schott listed as the acting chair, but that meeting Chairman, Chairwoman Shriver was the acting chair. So that was the correction we made.
Okay. All on board with that?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a, have a motion to accept these with the correction?
I'll make a motion to accept them with the corrected.
Second?
Aye. I'll second it.
All right. So we're ready to vote on those?
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Solak?
Aye.
Commissioner Schott?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Minutes pass.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to the audience for visitors. The audience for visitors is where you have the ability to come to the podium and speak about anything other than the public hearing. At the audience for visitors, we ask that you don't speak on the public hearing because we have an audience for visitors for the public hearing specifically. This is for matters other than the public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak to the planning commission about something other than the public hearing item, this is the time to do so. So if we don't have anyone that wishes to speak, we'll close the audience for visitors and we will move on to the public hearing item tonight, which is a request for a conditional use permit by Charles A. Count's owner and Brianna Russo applicant for the operation of an automobile repair garage slash tow yard at 611 Yorktown Road, tax map parcel 17-01-00-0023, approximately .7021 acres, zoned RS, single-family residence. Who will be making that presentation tonight? Thomas?
Thomas and give us the particulars.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The application is just how you read applicant and the request. The city code consideration, of course, is that automobile repair garages and tow yards are not permitted use in any zoning district in the city. It is listed in the B2, but requires a CUP as well. This was legally advertised for and adjacent property owners were notified. Important to note that adjacent property owners in both the city and York County were notified. The request is to operate an automobile repair garage and tow yard at the subject parcel. The applicant currently owns and operates Guardian Auto Towing at 608 With Creek Road. I'm sure you're all familiar with it, formerly Champs. They envision using the new site to expand operations to new building to better facilitate larger repair jobs. The applicant has expressed that at no time would more than eight employees be on site and only three or four cars per day would be repaired at the new location. This is the proposed site. I do have the GIS pulled up actually in a different browser if it'd be easier for you all to see, but generally it's, if you turn right onto Yorktown Road at the intersection that carries Chapel, that's where we're looking at. And it is what we've referred to as the last parcel in the city really on that side. It's neighbored by two Pecoson parcels. I'll say to its northeast, the parcel to its south, 201 East Yorktown is a York County parcel, as is 1200 Victory Boulevard, and everything directly adjacent, directly across the street is also York County. This is a survey that was done of the property. I understand it may be a little hard to see in this form, but, but you do have it in front of you. Basically, it shows that how the site, it's a current site survey, a physical survey of what is there. I can come back to this and discuss it in more detail if you all desire. This is a picture of the site that I took from Yorktown Road. This is looking into what is an old gravel driveway to the site on the left, and then of the right is the tree line between this property and the adjacent property, which is in the city. This is looking at the site, I'll say from Yorktown Road, direct, directly in front of it and a little bit past the entrance. I did, I was able to gain access to the site after a conversation with the property owner, which allowed me to do so. This is the building and structure that currently exists. We are recommending nine conditions for this application and in my memo, I'm a little more detailed, of course. I'm sure you all had a chance to read it, but at this site, a mechanic shop did, did operate at one time and according to the applicant from 1970 to 2003, they, they stopped work there just after Hurricane Isabel, I believe. But it's the antenna of the applicant, as I mentioned in the memo, to really facilitate more room and expand their operation, which currently exists in the city for jobs that their current building really doesn't accommodate. They do have a towing component to their business and, you know, we understand would be towing some cars in and out of this lot, but, you know, to preserve the residential character of, of that part of, of the city and also York County, we've recommended the following conditions. The plans for the site should only approved, be approved once all requirements of city code are satisfied. The hours of operation are to be from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM and no outdoor activity is permitted between the hours of 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Repair work shall be performed within the building only. Inoperable vehicles shall be stored inside of or in the rear of the building and screened from public view. Screening shall be maintained along each property line as required in City Code, Section 10-A to the B2 District Regulations. These are the screening requirements that we see when we permit storage yards, you know, a combination of manmade or natural materials may be used and so forth. Signage is to be permitted in accordance with Appendix D, signs of the city code. And then the three that we always say, the use must comply with all local, state, federal permits, license, and regulations. If at any time the specific use is discontinued, for a period of more, of two or more years, the permit shall become null and void and that city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. I don't want to speculate on, on the operation specifically. I am certainly not a certified mechanic. I would lose that job fast, but specific to the application, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Right now for Thomas, so did you want to wait until after the public?
I'm gonna wait till after the hearing.
I do see the applicant and I do want to mention, I sent you all today communications from two adjacent property owners, York County property owners. You, I gave you a hard copy of that communication as well and, and with the application in the packet, you will see the letters that we requested from the applicant, from the three, from the two adjacent and third, I'll say nearest property owner on the city, that they were amenable and agreeable to the use.
All right. At this point, we will now open the public hearing on this and if anyone wishes to come to the podium and address the planning commission regarding this application, now is the time to do it. And if you would, please be sure and give your name and address when you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Chris Gribble. I live at 218 East Yorktown Road, directly across from this. This place we're talking about is surrounded by residential housing. The term of talk about letting a business right in the middle of a residential. It's, it's R S, done on the Art side, on the Coors side, and on the York County side, it's RR, which is rural residential, which is even more restricted. And I, I know what your lot is. I worked for Gene Champ back in the seventies when Gene Champ had his gas station, because I helped him build his tour lot. And people was in night and day, and who's gonna make sure they don't start building? So they ain't calling the wreck vehicle in the middle of the night with the noise and all this stuff. It's also the whole idea of having a business, what I'm talking, that they're working on business. I understand that there's places in Pecoson that they are happy, but they most has been there for 60 years. Where they're at now, it's been there for 60 years. McPherson's been there, Freddie's been there. These places where people had a choice, they built the sidewalks knowing they were there. Here, we're not having a choice. We're talking about just picking one anyway, crossing the street, in a residential area. It's gonna add more traffic and that's already a dangerous road. The telephone pole in front of my house has been taken out twice in the last five years because of guy run off the road, somebody recently, just a month and a half ago, evidently tell him on a boat or something, tore the power lines down, smacked the pole out in front of my house. So it's a dangerous road, very fast. The mailbox is about three months ago. Four mailboxes right in front of my house got taken out by a car. It's not a good road when you put a business on in a residential area. I mean, that's the whole idea with having a zone RS is to preserve the residential, residential feel and of a neighborhood. So this is not a possibility. It's gonna turn it into a business district. It's just not, I hope y'all, I hope y'all understand this is a residential neighborhood. I hope it stays that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come?
Chris Russo, 900 Lee Drive. We are down here at the garden, killing and repairing. I just want to say this, we have two other storage lots that are accident problems. Illegal parkers get it here. That's not what these stores are being doing here. All this is gonna do is allow us to expand our shopping, labor jobs, transition jobs, and we can contract to the post office, do the work in that shop, because our shop too smart to do that. No cars will be towed in from any evening, which will still be dropping, they'll be able to walk to the shop, and they will still go to our main shop over the pre-berd. At that point, we will decide which people to be in that shop, you know, work on. They need bigger jobs or creative missions or whatnot, it will be easier on a bigger facility to have the shop. So it's not gonna be a store, just bring cars, drop them off, or customers just drop them off, they're gonna be able to work on. It's nothing like that. It's just a secondary place to go to bigger jobs, and they can store a couple of kids upstairs there on board. And on top of that, in 2003, you said that that property was, was still, anyway, 2003, that was still a commercial business, sorry? Lot?
It was under catatance by the owner, of course, yes.
So if that's the case, I'm sure people moved in there before then when it was still commercial. So now all of a sudden it got turned to residential, it's an issue. So when it was commercial, again, when people still moving, buying, building, but now it got turned residential, it almost got back to commercial, that's an issue. I just want y'all to know it's not gonna be a store lot, we're gonna have to store vehicles, but we'll not be bringing cars in and out, they hate and they hate. We're not responding to people running over telephone poles, taking out that box, that doesn't do with us. On top of that, there's no difference in a wrecker going up and down the road all day long with the slings on, going to tow, doing something versus a wrecker. We did it for us to do it, pulling their car apart when they got there. So I mean, I don't see what the problem would be with wrecks coming in and out because there are three cars moving on the road. But we're not, if, if doing a pension on that being a store lot for a broken down wrecker vehicle, it's just gonna be a secondary shop. Like I said, that car is still coming to six or eight when pre-approved, and that point we decide which ones we can drop. That shop they can work on, we will transform ourselves and can drop them, we'll fill them with our wreckers to that property, drop them off, do the repair to them. And that will not be a place for customers coming in and out. It's just strictly a little, a little secondary place to go to work safely and do work. It's all that we're gonna do.
I got a question. The access to your facility, does it start off of Yorktown Road in York County to, to reach your lot?
We have, it's part of the vision.
So there's no actually paved, it's just a gravel or dirt road?
It's just a existing gravel lane that runs here.
So it's a gravel lane?
Could you flip back to the pictures that you took earlier? I have a question for Mr. Russo while, while he's up here. If I can find my, so the photo on the left, I kind of see those two blocks in the middle of the grass. I drove by it earlier tonight. Is that the access road?
Yes, it is. It's supposed to be gravel, went over here, it's pretty rough, so it's not gravel. Same lane, kind of.
Okay. So it's coming off, if you're coming out of the city, it's gonna be that right-hand turn?
And then also, to let y'all know, that new bakery face will be taken down. Our plan to keep this work station as we can on the property line, up, have shelter and everything, referencing one of all the pieces, there was a lot of noise and everything else and seeing what's going on, hell, all that stuff. And we knew we had a shop right on the pre-berd everywhere, where it's at, and the two houses right behind us, we don't have motion, we can repair it right up to that little shop.
And just to confirm, so there will, there will be no towing of vehicles after business hours to that lot? So it's not gonna interrupt residents after the, whatever the timeframe was on there?
It won't really, because we had, we actually had two store lots, that's where those cars are. There's cars that have a place, aren't involved in there, if you have a rotation list, those cars are gonna shut locks, they wanna come to this place. Maybe it will, on, illegal parkers on, is when you go, if somebody not parking around, supposed to park at. We don't do a lot of that, because I don't believe we do, I just don't wanna have to worry about it, but then we do it for somewhere else, I just got tired of doing it a little bit. But unfortunately, we do have some shop services, we have to do that for. And all that stuff I bring out of the city for a lot that's on private road, that, because I don't want those kind of people being used in the city, because they get angry, nasty, you know, fighting how neighborable that is. So those don't even come here, I bring it to somewhere else and you don't have to worry about it.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. So your activity, your hours of operation are 8:00 to 7:00 PM. That's listed in the application here that's submitted to us. I went through all of the other auto parts locations, they McPherson's, Pecoson, your other shop at With Creek Road, Freddie's. They all operate from 8:00 to 5:00.
Yeah, they just put the seven in there, wouldn't be, if, if sometimes if you're finishing up a job, let's say, you might take an extra minute, that's where you added a little extra time. Just case you're finishing up, you have a certain minutes to finish the job up and then go home, so that will be next morning, now when you're out in that job.
Are you, are you planning on overnight work there? Because that's, so, you know, with, if you're working inside of the building, you know, and you've got torque wrenches and things going off, if you're working on vehicles, you know, with the adjacent property owners, I'm just making sure that that-
We have other shops that will do that.
Okay.
I guess that's a fair thing to do, start to fix being a business, because you got contracts out, but I mean, it's hard, it's making the effort, I mean, it's gonna, someone be like, man.
What are you, sorry, what are you gonna be doing to the existing structure, if anything? Or is that where you plan to work?
No, we plan on knocking at it, we're cleaning up the inside of the property line, putting up the old roof out there.
How many square feet would it be? Approximately the same size or?
No, it's probably, probably like a 35, 40, 50, which is pretty close to that. I think that one was 50 by, I had it on the payment, I didn't recall, you know, the reason all of that, trying to make reference to the foundation and this stuff, I'm gonna make, it was maybe 50 by 20 or 30 times, something like that.
Concrete wall, is that gonna be removed as well?
Yes, sir. I'll have it removed and taken off.
I have a question too. I understand that you have some affiliation with the race, with the race cars or?
We saw that those on Facebook.
I have seen that on Facebook, but it raised a question in my mind that I know how loud those cars are, because they have no mufflers, and so my concern is working on those kinds of vehicles in that shop, the noise that would be created during that period of time by working on those types of vehicles. Is that primarily what is this is set up for?
I don't own race cars, maybe sponsored race cars, sponsorship. And I really much did after my granddad, when they did the racing, you know, in San Francisco, the money I'm paying to do, that was kind of my training camp, so we do a sponsor, we don't work on.
You don't work on race cars?
No.
Okay. Good. Glad to know that.
It's just sponsorship, so we can sabotage, it's business, we don't work on. And if we did work on, and it was issue, I'm sure the city, we got complaints by now, by our neighbor that are right back up to our shop.
Well, that's not a very big shop there to be working on those kinds of, I wouldn't think.
Well, he, he can do anything he wants, he wants to, but it's, it's hard to work on some stuff in there.
Pretty tight quarters there.
It is, but we need to work.
Can I ask about, I was looking at the hours of operations from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM and no outdoor activity is permitted between hours of 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Wouldn't the outdoor activity mirror the closing time of 7:00 PM?
They, I think that was put in there to say pretty much no coming in and out of the property between that.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
One other question I have, do you have, if you're finished? Just looking at the plot and, and the way the entrance is into the property, I was just curious to know how that will be redesigned to be able to make a right-hand turn coming out of your property?
I don't think you're making a right-hand turn, like I said, everything will be going to from our shop there with the birds, it's just like this.
So you're saying you'll never be making a right-hand turn out of that property?
Never.
Never? Yeah. Okay.
No, I thought you wanted, why would I?
No, I mean, I know, I know the property well and I know it would be very difficult to make a right-hand.
You would be scared of converting here.
Inoperable vehicles. How long are inoperable vehicles gonna be there?
Well, it is, it would be your repair shop, see, I think, inoperable, hardly needs a motor. It might take a month, they're gonna motor it, that's what you're supposed to do, tell the customer, come get your car.
But it's not gonna be like a junkyard?
No, it's in, I don't know if you ever saw what Champ used to look like before we took over it?
Yes.
All right. So you know how much money and stuff we did out there when we took over that place. I don't believe in having a bunch of junk sitting around, because it was disgusting. So yeah, I wouldn't be making that.
Let me ask you, are you going to be operating Monday through Sunday?
No.
What are your, what are your days? Monday through Friday? No Saturdays and Sundays? Okay. Uh-uh, it's not in here and I wanted to know, because the weekends I would think of you-
And at 9:00 AM, we don't even do nothing out there. We're gonna start with this and the workload, what's going on, what kind of job we're doing, what kind of space we need to do.
Okay. Would you, would you be opposed to, to doing a little, I'm just throwing this out to you, where you've got 8:00 to 7:00? Since the other places are 8:00 to 5:00, I'm just wondering if you'd be willing to do, I mean, 7:00 to 5:00, I'm wondering where 7:00 to 5:00 and 8:00 to 5:00, would you compromise maybe with a 5, 8:00 to 6:00?
We can discuss that. I mean, I just think that if the problem is that for a minute past is a spot, we're gonna have people, people are discreet about it, you know what I'm saying? That's, that's why we're possible, we do 8:00 to 7:00, it gives a little comfort or way before the boys, or this is, this is how.
So one of my concerns is, while that's all good, is the residential neighborhood that is, that homes are around this.
I understand that, but you have to understand too, it's, it's a main road and it's already loud, you don't want the traffic coming down there.
I'm, I'm familiar, I live on Little Florida, so I, I understand, but-
The tree line and the fencing and all, you're hardly gonna hear it in your seat.
I was just thinking that most people, the hours, you know, they would be away from home, would be, you know, and that's why, and at 7:00 o'clock, most everybody is at home, even at 6:00 they're at home. I would say 6:00 would be kind of stretching it, but I just wanted to know if you might possibly compromise where, where I know, I know McPherson's closes at 5:00 and y'all close, and y'all close at 5:00, your other place?
We're also gonna be an hour later, we'll be up there, instead of 7:00, in the morning, other turn drapes as well, we'll be up there.
You're basically right across really from Freddie's Garage, which-
A little bit back from-
Yeah, you're close enough, though, but-
Yeah, we're not too far.
If I could throw a baseball any better than I do now, I could probably hit it.
See, Freddie's is almost to the corner where this one is. It's quite a bit, it's quite a distance.
And that's the same type of a place, right?
They do auto, auto, which is a county, I mean, since all, our, we're here on our bodywork, and then you're counting, and then they can use our, they can back together.
They're in York County, aren't they?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, even some of that road, I think, is in York County.
It is, well.
And it was granted, I read a letter from the attorney's office saying that it, the access to that facility has been agreed to in a previous letter, if I'm not mistaken.
Ordered by the circuit court.
Ordered by the circuit court.
Confirm that there's an easement of ingress and egress.
Which I believe is shared with this gentleman. Is that correct?
No.
My house is directly across from that, it's a tenth of a mile from Freddie's to my house. It's 500 feet.
Okay.
You can't see Freddie's all the way around.
Y'all's comments can't be heard, it's all right. And you're welcome to come to the podium again in a few minutes, but the audience at home can hear your response, so, okay. Any further questions for Mr. Russo? so, okay, any further questions for Mr. Russo?
Yes, Mr. Russo, I was looking at the packet that you submitted, that, about your future, and it says, the shop will be able to accommodate larger vehicles, including service vehicles, motor coach, buses, hauling trailers and boat trailers. It's a little bit different bringing in a truck or, or a car when you're looking at, like, a motor coach, like, you ride a coach down the street. Can you just talk a little bit more about, is that going to be, is that steady part of what you anticipate?
No, and I don't, some of that stuff is added in, I don't think I'm working on those, which have the diesel engines, and I don't know, just the interest in diesel engines. Boat trailers, my vision of repairs of boat trailers, but that's, it's a trailer, it's not like it's, it's just seeing pretty much the vehicle, bringing in more of them, sending it out.
Well, okay, I think I'm looking at, yeah, there's a big difference when you have a giant motor coach driving down the street.
See, they do pre-dating when it's setting, pack itself, and doing these different things, like, they do a lot of that, or something like that. We do do, we do do boat, air, trailer repairs, and trailer repairs, you know, action, areas and stuff like that, it's pretty much that.
Okay, so is it accurate to strike motor coach and buses off of this?
All right.
I assume you tend to work on vehicles with open bay doors, with typ, your typical impact wrenches and those sorts of noises. What type, I'm just wondering if you have any inclin, any idea what the orientation of that building is going to be, where those, because I, I know on the side of a building that has a block wall or something, I think the, the noise is lessened by that, whereas if you're projecting out of a bay door, you know, which way that will be facing with your planned construction?
The doors, depends on the property, how we can set it up, and if the doors are pretty much facing towards the door. But a lot of trees and the fencing, all trees, a lot of, they don't have vegetation on the property line out, I'll actually still be staying on it to be able to.
Are there trees between the road, and where your plans to construct the building?
No, you can't see, it's, it's a lot of vegetation, trees.
The only place you can see it is right there, that's the spot.
And when the previous building was there, a lot of people, I don't really even think, knew that was there, I mean, for years back there.
Like I said, it's not a good place for customers to shop, it's left, that part of the building, it's left at my house, and they're there for, if you don't have a, we're not even for a sign of it, like that, if you don't have to go with that.
I was just to confirm, this is the first parcel on that side, that's Bacosen. To the left is York County.
If you come in, onto Yorktown from Craig's Chapel, it would be the first on, on the lot.
So that whole wooded area is York County, and then this is the first Bacosen.
That corner is York County.
That corner, okay.
The, there's a large parcel, you know, to the southwest, where it's labeled twelve hundred Victory. This one that pretty much takes up half of the image is, is a York County parcel, as is the one in front of it, the, the small, the small, I'll call it a pie-shaped parcel that is two oh one East Yorktown.
Okay, if there's no more questions at this time from Mr. Russo, and I'm sure he'd be willing to come back to the podium if there are any later, we'll let him have a seat. All right, and someone else wish to come to the podium and speak? Okay, ma'am, and if you would, give us your name and address.
Six nineteen York County Road, I am the adjacent to the right of the property that Dave Russo would like to buy, so I'm the closest to them. I don't know when this everyone is residential, my family, but my husband's family's been there since nineteen seventy-three. They actually bought, would count, our house, the house we live in now, and sold it to my in-laws in seventy-three. Then it's never had a house on there, it's always been some kind of junkyard. You know, we've never had a little seat because of all the trees lining, and we've always been fine. The only residential people would be the homeless people that have been back there years ago, and gentlemen who decided to squat back there for a few years. Those are the only residents that have ever been there, nobody else has. I've known the Russos for many years, and I, and I trust them to do what they say they're going to do. And it's, I don't understand everybody's issue with it, with the property value. There's, if they were going down to Westover and going to put it right on a lot in the middle of all the houses that are right there, that's not a main road, this is a main road. We have so much traffic on this road, it's, it's crazy. And the, the driveway that comes off that you're talking about, that had to go through the courts, that was us and two other people that own the parts, and we are fine with it, to give it two counts, because if not, he couldn't sell the property. And there's no reason to not let him sell that property. I don't see a difference in what's been there for all these years, and them going in there and creating business to help Bacosen. I just don't understand the difference. I don't think they will, I know they will not be towing cars in and out, like they said, I believe them. So, to me, being the closest, we're okay with it. Our neighbors behind us are okay with it, all of us have sent the papers saying that it was ourselves, Mr. Hood behind me, and the Hopsons that are at the end, Hopkins that are at the end of the lane, and all of us were okay with it. And we're all Bacosen, so that's pretty much what I have to say, I think it'd be fine. I don't understand the whole property value, because we own the lot next to it and the house next to it. So that's all our property, so it would really be affecting us more than anybody being right next door to it. So, that's, oh, any question? No?
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, come up and give us your name and address.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Carol Denise Hobson, and I'm an adjacent neighbor, an owner of two twelve and two sixteen East Yorktown Road and other parcels of land directly across the street from six eleven Yorktown Road. I also share a right-of-way, according to Mr. Count's, to six eleven Yorktown Road. My homes and land all share a common driveway directly across the street from six eleven Yorktown Road, and this allows the only ingress and egress to East Yorktown Road. The distance from the end of the driveway to the opposite side of East Yorktown Road is twenty-nine feet, and narrows further into a bend and dip in the road. I also have some G.I.S. aerial views that offer a better view than this one, if you're interested in seeing them.
Did you say you had that on a separate window?
Can you? Do you have enough? So, I wish to point out, as everyone is aware, that Freddie's Body Shop is located six hundred feet west of six eleven Yorktown Road, where the road has been widened to accommodate four lanes of traffic. At that location, there are far fewer problems for such a business, first because there are no adjacent residential neighbors, and second because the road has been widened to accommodate four lanes of traffic. The Russo's current business location on With Creek Road is also situated on a wider road for easier access. So, my neighbor mentioned that because the road is so narrow, it goes into a curve and then into a bend, the, the width is twenty-seven feet across. There have been two accidents within the past six months, and the most recent was the downing of a power line pole on the twenty-eighth of September. So, we're concerned about access and, of course, property values being diminished and spoiling the, the tranquility of our rural residential neighborhood. So, I hope you received the letter that I sent today, saying that this is being redundant, but, yeah, we're, we're concerned about tow trucks coming in in the middle of the night. Freddie's Body Shop, when I passed today, they did have tow trucks there, but they were next to Victory Boulevard. So, where they're loading and unloading cars with their tow trucks, it's right in the middle of a busy intersection, so, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Else? Yes, sir?
So, I keep on hearing about the road not being wide enough and accidents and things like that. That's just people not knowing how to drive or paying attention. That really has nothing to do with the business going in there. And on top of the hearing about the tow trucks at Freddie's Body Shop, and you say, I think they said we would be unloading in the middle of the road or in the middle of an intersection or something like that? No, we can drive the trucks onto the property and unload in there, if we knew it long enough, we can fit in tight spots. And that's about it.
All right.
The, he's talking about not towing in, what would be your recourse if he starts doing it in the middle of the night? We can complain, but what is there to stop him from doing? He's going to spend all this money on a, buying the property, building a steel building, and then barely using it, that doesn't make any sense. Once it gets there, it's there, and he's going to use it wherever he wants to use it with, we have no recourse to stopping, except to call and complain, and what good is that going to do? It's, it's kind of disingenuous saying they're not going to do very much there. I expect it's going to be more busier at this one than the one they actually have at Bacosen Avenue and With Creek, because it's going to be much more room and they can do much with it. And like I said, all the businesses in Bacosen that are there now, all the gas stations, they've been there forever, people had a choice to build beside them, just like the two houses directly behind their shop now in Bacosen, they were, they knew it was going to be there, and we built there, so they understood that, so they took that, that leap to, to, to build beside it and live beside it. We don't have any choice, like I said, we're saying we're just going to be, have to just live with it, and that just doesn't seem fair, that, that we'll have to just put up with it regardless, if, like I said, who, what's our recourse if he doesn't do what he said he's supposed to do? Is there any recourse for us? I mean, complaining, and, and he will say he won't do it again, and then do it again, over and over again.
Or to?
Sure, like, like any conditional use permit, Madam Chair, we always include the condition that City Council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. And that is not exclusive of revoking of the permit, so, with any conditional use permit, if, if the, the applicant, the, the permit holder was acting outside of those conditions, that was either observed by staff or we received complaints, we'd certainly follow up on it with the applicant. But then, if, if true, then we would obviously re-refer it to Council and probably make a recommendation that they, they do revoke it, it, it's in the seventh condition, and that, it ends with the City Council may revoke the permit if the use is operating in violation of the regulation, so, that's why that's there, for, for bad actors, if it was to arise that can revoke the permit.
Another question is, once they make it into, y'all make it into a business, y'all might throw him off of it, but somewhere else can do right back into it somewhere else y'all can permit for, so once it become business, it, it stay that way. If he's talking about building a steel building to work out of, that building's going to be there, so it's going to be a commercial site forever, you know, never go back to being a residential.
They have to seek a conditional use permit.
If a conditional use permit was revoked, then the permit is revoked for the property, someone else couldn't continue the use that, for which a permit was revoked.
They'd have to seek a.
They would have to apply for a subsequent CUP, that's exactly right.
Yeah.
The, the property would, is still, remains R.S., it's just that you've got a conditional use permit, should that permit be rejected or reviewed or revised, then it can go back to an R.S.
That, that, that's correct.
Because it is.
The underlying zoning is not being changed, it's not a rezoning application, it'll continue to be R.S. And if at any time the, the permit is revoked or expires, it's still R.S., it'll always be R.S., but, you know, the nature of the conditional use permit is for uses not otherwise permitted by right to operate in really any zoning district that they request.
Well, that answers your question.
Well, no, because once the metal building is built to work out of it, it's there.
They're tearing down the building this time, if you're going to make it into a house, you're not going to be working out of a metal building.
Well, but you'd have to tear it down, and that would be a financial thing for somebody that has to tear a building out to build a house, so it'll stay a business forever, it'll never go back to being a residential, once that building's there, that's it, it's going to be a res, it's going to be a business forever, because a steel building is not a cheap building to put up, and all the stuff you're going, it's just going to have lifts, that means hydraulic lifts, all this stuff's got to be done, it's no longer going to be a residential neighborhood, it's going to be a business piece of property forever, it'll never go back. And that's the thing, once you do it, it's done, and it's done right in a residential area. Thank you.
So what is your address?
Two eighteen, my driveway is directly across from where that drive.
And how long have you been at that property?
Coming up on fifteen years.
So you bought there after it was vacated, then?
It's been vacated for as long as I can remember, I'm, I'm from Bacosen, I just moved up there. That, that spot is not being used in probably twenty years or more, there's nothing going on in there, it's just, it's been an empty site for years.
I know, I know that it's never had a home on it, as long as I can remember, and I'm a native of Bacosen.
Had a store up there, which trafficked a lot of people, count the store, was there?
Yeah, but that was not there, that was further back.
It was right there, all along where that property was.
No, it was on the other side of the dirt road where the Hopkins lived.
But it's.
That's the house I bought, I bought the original old Hopkins house, they built it in nineteen thirty-nine, that's how.
So you were right next door to the store, then? Is that right next door to the store, two eighteen?
Right across the street from it.
Right across the, the old store.
And I'm actually kind of closest, it's two hundred and twenty feet from my house to where this is going to be at. The lady that spoke earlier, she's much farther away than I am, I, I'm right across the street from it. My driveway, like I said, is right, right where their driveway is.
Now, the Clark's lived right next door to, they live between the dirt road going back to the Hopkins and this parcel. You are further up and across the street, is that correct?
I'm directly across the street from this six eleven, my house is two eighteen, it's directly across, almost, like I said, my driveway.
But then, I'm looking at this map, it would appear to me that two twelve is sort of. Maybe I'm misreading this, but I see two eighteen.
I see two twelve, yeah, yeah.
On Mr. Clark's, from maybe the Clark's property, is that?
Yes, ma'am, there's a, there's a big open field before you get to their house, so it's quite a big ways to their, to their house, it's quite a ways over to their house when you get to their house. And then also, if you look on the, I guess it may show, and there's, the, the land right in front, a large part of right in front of this property, is owned by somebody else, and there's nothing, and it's a, it's ro, zoned rural residential.
That's two oh one.
He's saying, oh, there's trees down, well, the person that owns it, they can cut it down, because they can build a house on it at some point, so then it's going to open it up, you will see right directly across at some point, because the people are going to want to sell that piece of land, I think, for a while. You see that in the red?
Yeah, I, I know the property.
And that's in Yorktown. The road is, if you look, the property line goes right down the middle of the road, then turns, is what it does.
I know the Counts have had that property for sale for many years now, as a residential site.
Yeah.
And to, to no avail have they sold, so I think that, that kind of speaks to the fact that people really aren't interested in a, in a, in a home there on that property.
Maybe because there's boys desirable in Bacosen, at some point, there's not going to be a desirable, and then a house will get built on it. That's my feeling, that at some point it's going to be, because it's going to run out of land in Bacosen, the pill houses on it.
It's been a long time, though.
And so it will become at some point.
Okay. Thomas, do you know, can you clarify that your?
Thomas, do you know, can you clarify the, the York County property that's adjacent, is that, are those zoned residential as well?
All of them, um, well, 201 and 1200 are zoned rural residential. Um, I mentioned it, um, in the memo, but it's, it's basically, um, York County's single family residential zone, um, the minimum lot size is an acre, um, so it is truly what it sounds like, a rural residential district.
About where Bayside is and the church is there.
The church is...
They're right, they're right there, close to it.
That's further off.
That's...
It's further off, but it's along on that end.
It, it is, and that church access is, is really the first, uh, some parcel on the other side of, of the road, um, and then, of course, the rest of our residential district moves forward.
They generate a lot of traffic.
Well, I, I, I was just reading this, uh...
All right, well, I guess we shouldn't be discussing it too much more though, because it may be somebody else that wishes to speak, we still have public hearing, and we'll, we'll, when we close it, we'll discuss it even more. Anybody else?
Talking about, um, businesses being in the middle of, um, the neighborhoods, there's a lawn company right past the church, KAV, and he is out of his house, and he has all his stuff in there, he's got all his trailers that go up and down in the morning at 6 o'clock, which goes by our house, which I can hear when my windows are open. I don't understand what the difference is, he has all this property, I mean, all his lawn stuff, and he works on it, he has all his trailers, and he works out, you know, he pulls them in and out, so I don't understand, he's at his own house, but it's...
Thank you for bringing that point up, is that, uh, under a conditional use permit for that?
I do not believe so.
And I don't know who they are, I don't know them, I just know, when you drive by there, you can see it, because it's right, right behind, like, if you go into Bayside and come around, you can see it from Bayside, and you can see it from the road. And he has, you know, a few big trailers, like, the trailer's probably sitting out there when you took the picture, somebody had a trailer sitting there, um, might've been my lawn guy, I don't know, um, but they have those, and that's in the middle, and it's not zoned commercial at all, so how can that be okay and that not? And he's right next to houses, so, that's just my question, my idea, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, if not, we're going to close the public hearing, and we'll discuss this, Planning Commission can discuss it. Okay.
Well, I, I was just looking through the packet, and, you know, looking at some of the verbiage that was provided, um, under the executive summary, um, the additional shop will allow our team to perform large jobs and store cars, parts, and towed vehicles. Yeah, I thought this was not gonna be a storage yard, but this, according to this verbiage here says, allows our team to perform larger jobs, store cars, parts, and towed vehicles, and then the page is over, is where it spoke to buses and motor coaches under our future, um, you know, I, 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 you know, I wonder if this business will eventually evolve into what they're saying right here. And, and I understand the folks that live across the street, and, and, and I, I mean, I understand that, I get that. Uh, I know that Mr. Count's operated that mechanic store for many, many years, and to my knowledge, there was never any complaints or anything like that, but of course, he was a smaller business, he wasn't a booming business, uh, cars hauled in, hauled out, towed in, towed out, it wasn't that type of thing, but it's always been a mechanics, and, and, Ms. Hobson, you've lived there...
Parking dog.
I'm sorry?
Parking dog was the problem. There was some parking...
Oh, oh, he had a dog there, yeah, junkyard dog, I guess you'd call it, right? Um, but, as, as far as I know, there was never any major objection to him operating that, that business, because it was on a small scale.
Right.
Uh, a- and of course, the, all of the, the, um, trees and, and bushes and all of that has grown up around it, which is hiding it, if you will, even more. So, my concern is, is that this is going to be a major operation as opposed to a small town operation, and are we setting a precedence here, you know, by, because it is on the outskirts of residential zoning, um, you know, saying, well, you know, because I know it hasn't, you know, it, it's been offered for sale as a residential lot, and hasn't, it's been probably two to five years, maybe longer than that, um, probably since Mr. Count soon after he left, but, um, I, I, you know, I, I have mixed feelings about it, I understand as a resident how you, how you feel, and yet I know what was there, and I know, i- if that same type of use were to continue, I don't think it would probably be objectionable to anybody, but if it becomes a major, major, um, storage yard, maintenance facility, you know, I, I, I just can envision that it would become something larger, and I'm, I, I wanna see Coasts and have businesses, because I think we need that, um, for revenue, for the support of the city, but at the same time, I think that if it were limited, maybe, if we were to put restrictions stronger than what you have on it, so that it did not become a major, uh, property, uh, I don't know, I, I just, I have mixed emotions, I'm just kind of speaking out loud, talking out loud.
Well, I think the reason you have that is because you've gotten two different stories in the presentation here, the executive summary, it's a different story that Russo has told us tonight.
That is correct.
So, the confusion comes with, we're seeing here mentions of towing vehicles, and he says he is not gonna be, he's gonna tow them there and drop them off. I, I'm, I'm kind of confused too by it, because I've kind of gotten two different feelings about it. If, if it was, I'm like Libby, if it was purely for, for going in there and, and using it for a facility to be able to work on larger jobs, let's say, let's use the term jobs, I don't know if that's correct or not, but I'm gonna say it. I think that very few people, a lot of people don't even know right now that there's been anything back there. I'm like Libby, I never heard anything much about it, I spent some time myself up on Yorktown Road when I was a younger person, uh, my cousin lived up there and spent a lot of time going up and down the road on bicycles and so forth, and going to Count's Store, and nobody ever had much complaint about it, it was always kind of grown overlooking, and you didn't really even notice it, and right now, nobody notices it hardly.
It's shielded by vegetation.
Because it's shielded, and it, but I think the confusion is the presentation tonight, the verbal presentations, but the summary here, it kind of doesn't line up with it. Now, I, I would be for, you know, I would, I, I'm for businesses in the Coasts, coming to the Coasts, and there has been a business there for many years, it, that, two, the store and this, and, uh, you know, and it, essentially, there's a large business up there, which is Bayside, that is a business operation, that's a large business, um, and then, because you've got a church, which, that's not necessarily a business, I guess, but it's still a fairly large operation, but on that end of town. But I'm, I'm just a little bit confused as to what is actually going to go on there. I know that it would be to Mr. Russo's advantage and the applicants who are trying to get this thing going, not to, uh, if you want to say then operate it, I think it, it would be to your advantage if this did go through, not to, not to, uh, violate the conditions, because they could shut you down, particularly if a bunch of your neighbors start coming out and complaining about your, uh, operation. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm not so much worried about the traffic, I live on Coasts Avenue at 921 Coasts Avenue, and just probably about a month ago, somebody ran off a straight road, we live on a racetrack, it's a racetrack there. I've lived most of my life in very close proximity to it, the corner's always been bad, we've got school there, uh, very close, and somebody ran off and went down on the, in the culvert, I, I think they completely damaged their car to the point where it probably never ran again, but they got out of it and walked away, so I guess they were blessed in that respect, but I, I'm just a little bit confused, I, 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 I don't know what else to say, I feel like, Libby.
I have another question, and that the applicant is Brianna Russo, and, and then further somewhere, it says, Mr. and Miss, or I guess, I don't know if it's Mr. and Mrs., but is there, do one of you own the company, or do both of you own the company, or how is your, because I see the applicant is Brianna Russo. So, it's 100% female-owned business, okay, so you're really not an owner in the business, is that correct? Okay.
He's just a good speaker.
Uh, no, 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 I'm just trying to understand what I saw, when the applicant was just you. Okay.
Heather, did, I, so, my question is, is, is there a process for, I, I do feel like the packet that submitted the executive summary and, um, right before or after, sorry y'all, um, the executive summary, and then our future, I feel that that, um, is some of the contradictory concerning for the residents in that area of exactly the, the times and what's going on, and if that can be clarified? Thomas, how does this?
Sure, um, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for the applicant, um, but I'll talk you through a little bit of the process between myself and them, and, you know, of course, preparing tonight's, uh, application, that, what you see from them is, is a, a business plan, more or less, for their operation as a whole, as it exists on With Creek Road, and, and may exist, uh, at this new location. Um, of course, uh, writing a business plan for a private industry, we're gonna be a Fortune 500 company before you know it. I think it overshoots a, a, a bit of what the applicant has expressed they will be doing there, uh, which I, I explained, um, in the staff memo, um, they've indicated that their real desire is to, to use it as, as more of a satellite, uh, location to their location on With Creek, and, and for, for jobs that require a little more wiggle room, they could go to the new site, um, and, and, uh, they work on, um, postal service cars and, and things of that nature, indicated that they wouldn't be working on more than three or four cars there a day, vehicles a day, um, I, I should, should clarify. So, I, I don't necessarily think that some of the, the things...